Progress, that's never a good thing. Okay, folks. Call our ordinance committee meeting to get, to get, uh, whatever, uh, for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have our audience of citizens next. Everybody's here, right? What, who are we missing? One, who are we missing? Mark?
Kate.
Kate, Kate, okay. It's everything else is here. Anybody in the audience of citizens? I don't see anybody. No one's clamoring to speak with us. That's a good thing. Um, and can we motion to approve our May 6th?
I move we approve the May 6th meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. Second, second, thank you. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, abstention. Okay, we're approved. So moved. Okay, noise ordinance.
Right. This is a continuation from our May 6th meeting where, if you recall, we had reached out to SH Acoustics who have been helping us with our sound issues in Berlin for the past several months. And they've provided some feedback on what we could do with the town's existing ordinance to ensure that some of the tonal problems that we had been having with the bright feeds wouldn't occur again in other situations. And so some, some questions came up at the, at the last ordinance committee. I think the ordinance review committee was looking for just some, a better understanding of what the octave bands represented. So I reached out to both Tess and Steve, who are here with us this evening, so that they could offer just a little more, more input on that. And then I believe Jeff had mentioned measurement and enforcement. And do the police officers currently have the equipment that would be necessary to test the, these frequencies? And then if not, what would they need? And what type of training would they need as well if we were to move forward with adopting this ordinance, which would coincide with the town's existing ordinance? It would just add another layer of protection for, for these, these types of sound issues. With the bright feeds issue, it was a very low frequency tone that was causing some, uh, you know, distress or for the residents. And so this, this would address that. So, uh, like I mentioned, Steve is here. Thank you, Steve, being here this evening.
Thank you.
So if you have, I don't know if, uh, who, mayor, if you want to have questions or go from here.
Um, yeah, what, so did we have some, what were the questions we had? Oh, cause we were, I guess we were, weren't we talking about, cause it was a New York City ordinance? Did we think the amounts were, you know, were, would be not adequate or too much for, well, I mean, New York City and Berlin, let's, let's compare those two. What, what do we think about those levels?
I think, I think what you asked for was an example of what, an example of what sound would be at the low and high levels, right? To get an idea of what we look at these.
Oh.
Numbers, what, you know, what this represents.
What does it mean?
May I say a couple of opening remarks on this whole topic?
Yes, please.
Great, great. So, so we have been involved in noise studies and evaluations and noise ordinances for, for a long time here in many different types of communities, everything from, uh, smaller or suburban towns like yours to New York City, Philadelphia, Boston, you know, many other major centers. And first of all, I just want to commend you for even considering this enhancement to the noise ordinance. There are a number, quite a number of towns who are considering it. And they're, I don't want to say fearful of change, but sometimes, as you know, towns can be fearful of change. And
Yeah, Berlin, Maryland.
Yes. And, and, um, you know, what, what we, we and others in our industry have shown is that the long time standard of just relying on a single number, DBA number, um, in, in terms of compliance with noise just often doesn't do the trick. And I think we've proven that here with bright feeds. It does not accommodate two things. It does not accommodate tonal sounds. And it certainly does not accommodate sounds that are at different frequency ranges, meaning pitches, low, medium and high. So the, the DBA number is very much weighted towards the mid range of sounds. Okay. Which again, is, is in the speech range, a spoken word. It, you know, there's a lot of different, uh, sources that can be, that can fall within that main middle range of speech or of frequencies. But the low frequencies, uh, especially that, that are so prevalent in, uh, commercial and industrial operations, especially and, and other things as well, right? Bass in music and, uh, automotive, you know, vehicles, trucks, buses, other types of vehicles that, that are prevalent throughout, uh, all different communities. All of that low frequency sound just is ignored by the typical code, which is very much what, what your ordinance falls within, because it really limits itself to the DBA. So New York is, New York City is definitely ahead of its time. And it has shown to be, uh, very effective to, to consider, to consider those other elements, the tones, the pure tones, they call them in their code, the, um, the, the octave bands, which basically just says it's breaking up the sound into different frequencies, different pitches from low, medium and high, so that nothing goes ignored. And with that, the numbers that they have, let me put it this way, sound is sound, right? Meaning it, the annoyance of sound is, is, it's a fact that has been studied by, by, uh, experts like us. It's been studied by the medical community. It's been studied by legal professionals to know that, that an excessive amount of noise and sound will affect residents of any type of community, whether it be a large urban environment or, or a small rural type of community. The noise is going to affect, excessive noise is going to affect, uh, the health, the wellness, the, the right of peaceful enjoyment of property of the residents in the town. Some people, of course, are affected more than others. There's, it's very subjective, but for the most part, it, it's been proven overall that the effect, the impact of excessive noise can be very detrimental to, to the health and wellbeing of, of residents. So that is why, you know, the, the new, we, we pulled from the New York City noise ordinance, not because it's, we're trying to in any way compare the size of Berlin, Connecticut to New York City. It has nothing to really do with that. We're not, we're not saying that, you know, there, Berlin has all the subway noise that, that New York City has, right? Uh, we're not, we're not calling out specific sound sources that might be very, very applicable to one, but not the other. What we're doing is we're, we're referencing, uh, first of all, breaking it down into those octave bands. And we're, we're basically saying, as, as the studies in a city like New York did, is that this type of noise at this level in this frequency range or ranges will cause a disturbance. It will cause an impact on the residents that are, is detrimental and therefore should be avoided, uh, meaning that nobody shall produce a sound within all these different octave band ranges that exceed these values inside a residence, a home of any type, right? Single family home, apartment, condo, et cetera. So that, that is really, you know, what, I think I'm probably covering everything in one opening statement, but I'm just trying to kind of put the context, I'm trying to put the big picture thinking context on here that the idea with suggesting this, which came from our effort with bright feeds. And fortunately, you know, bright feeds played ball. They, they, they did what was necessary to solve the problem. You know, did they have to by legal standards? I don't believe so. From everything that we, we've determined, um, and, and of your noise ordinances, technically, they were not, they were in compliance because of the limitations, because of the, the noise ordinance not governing, uh, low frequencies and then tonal sounds at very specific frequencies. But, but again, you were very fortunate that they, they cooperated and did what was necessary. So this is really just what we're trying to, to bring to the table here and then actually in, in other locations too, through our involvement with, uh, various organizations to, to really help towns understand the benefits of, of adding, you know, certain requirements with tonal noise and frequencies of all ranges to the code. So I'll, I'll stop for now and see if there's questions.
All right. Appreciate that. Uh, that's great. That, that, you didn't go on too long. That's good. You gave a great explanation. I think we should answer most of our questions. What do we, what do we think, folks? Other questions based upon, uh, what we have in front of us and what Steve just said? What are we thinking? Yeah?
We were, we're looking for a, a gauge of what the different decibel levels, like a jet engine compared to a motor vehicle, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Tesla, do you want to grab this one?
Sure thing. So the part of the code that we would be addressing here isn't necessarily addressing noise levels, such as your example there with a jet engine or a rock concert versus an office space. You know, those are two very different noise environments and the noise level inside of each one, or just in each environment varies tremendously. A jet engine, a rock concert is well over a hundred decibels. Uh, rock concerts are usually around one ten or one twenty, which is very damaging to the ear. A typical office space, we're looking at, you know, maybe thirty to forty decibels, a little bit quieter than a typical conversation. The volume that I'm speaking at right now is around sixty. So everything has its own noise level. But as far as taking into consideration low, mid and high frequency ranges, uh, low frequency noise can be generated by ventilation plants, utilities, heavy, heavy machinery, and even industrial plants. Mid frequencies are those similar to the vocal range of people and other everyday activities such as cars, um, horns or fans. So those are really the general areas that we would be looking at with this addition to the ordinance. Now, as Steve had mentioned, low frequencies and their relative noise sources can be the same, or they can be vastly different. In comparing it to what is stated for the New York City noise ordinance, I'll, I'll use the same example, a sub, a subway. The town of Berlin definitely doesn't have that, but they have the Amtrak going through with the train. Not saying that this is an issue by any means, or that it is coming up by, as an issue at all. But this, these kinds of frequencies are felt rather than heard. With bright feeds going through the same remedial efforts that they did for the testing, um, we don't predict there to be any other issues of tonal low frequencies. However, having this in your ordinance will provide a safety net for any future corporations that may move in. If this answers your question about noise levels versus the frequencies and examples of frequencies.
Yes, thank you.
Tessa, can I ask?
Yes, of course.
Uh, Tessa, just one question. I just want to confirm is that if the town were to adopt this, bright feeds, although back when you had done your initial testing, they were in compliant during daytime hours, but they wouldn't have been compliant in evening hours, if I recall correctly. I'm wondering if we were to adopt this, would they have been in compliant? Or would this have called out there, that tonal problem specifically at that time?
That's a great question. So at the time before their attenuation efforts and all the work that they just did, they would not have met these, this ordinance or these limitations. However, since then, from our measurement testing, even around the town and at the source, those tonal peaks that we were measuring on site are gone. And the noise levels have dropped to below what those levels that we sent through in email. So they would be compliant if you were to apply it now.
Right. And in other words, you know, one way of putting somebody in compliance is to limit their operation, of course, you know, so that you're not in the restrictor or the stricter timeframe, the tenant, ten PM to seven AM type timeframe that normally governs nighttime, uh, requirements and restrictions. So, but, you know, for a company like bright feeds that always wanted to operate, uh, throughout, you know, twenty-four hours and such, obviously they needed to be in compliance, both timeframes.
Thank you. Um, any other questions, folks? Yes.
If we did adopt this, do we have the equipment and do we need more training for our officers?
I know, just, I, I had sent Tessa late in the day today. Lieutenant Solik is on. He, he had provided what the police department currently uses to measure sound. I'm not sure, Tessa, were you able to look at that and, and?
Yes. Yes. So we reviewed the sound level meter that the town of Berlin currently has at the police station, and it does not measure octave bands, which is what would be required for live frequency, uh, testing. So for this to be enforced, training would need to occur with the police department and a new meter would need to be sourced so that they could enforce this new code. We can surely be a source to assist in retrieving this kind of technology so that this can happen. Um, and we would be more than happy to assist with training, finding an easy way, not super complicated, so that this would be able to happen.
So let me add another layer on that, because there are traditional meters, like the one that you currently have, which as Tessa said, does not or do not, depending on how many you have, measure, uh, narrow band, octave band, third octave band, uh, type of frequencies. They measure the single numbers, those DBAs and DBC values that you have. Okay. So in all, um, aspects, yes, the, the perfect thing would be to acquire a, a meter, the step up to meters that measure narrow band is quite hefty. Okay. In terms of cost and not so much the training, the training is similar, but there, there's another, I, I offer another solution that maybe it's not even for, uh, tonight's consideration, but there, there are methods of utilizing, um, calibrated microphones with iPhones or iPads that have apps that can absolutely do the octave band, third octave band, and come within a very close, like within less than a DB of accuracy, uh, for this. We actually use them ourselves at times because they're, they're so accurate and, and it's so easy to use compared to certain meters and such. So it's something that doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, that's, that's not necessarily a, a decision that has to be determined now. But I just want everybody to understand that, uh, you, you can pull up, uh, applications on your phones that can give you pretty close readings, but now you can add through your phone's lightning port or USB C port, depending on what you have, calibrated microphones, which are not that expensive, uh, and calibrators to, to actually turn that into something that, that can be used justifiably in a noise ordinance, uh, compliance situation.
Okay. Um, yeah, that, well, that answers that. That was, I think, a couple of questions we, we had was the cost of the new equipment. Um, but if there's a reasonable alternative, which it sounds like there is, that, that's great.
And, and, you know, at, at worst case, like if something does become a serious legal matter, well, you, you have, you have some allies here that, that can, can, can help. But for the most part, on a day-to-day basis, you wouldn't need, you know, to, to come to an expert in that situation, once you're trained.
Thank you. Sandy, anything? Sandy?
No.
No? Okay. Um, all right. So what do we think? Um, looks good to us based upon tonight? Or we could talk about it?
I do have one question. Is it something that we should wait to know that we're going to be able to measure this and, you know, kind of follow our ordinance? Or do we wait till we know what we're going to do and how to measure it? And we have the equipment? What's the best way to proceed?
Well, I think in order to determine the effective date, you need to know when you're going to be able to enforce it.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so I don't know if there's, you know, in terms of purchasing the equipment, I don't know if there's a lead time on it. I don't know if it's something where you need a specification or you just order it and it's here in a week. I, I have no idea. Steve, Tessa?
Yeah, we, we would have to, we would have to look into, giving you both options, right? The standalone meter, the, the more expensive meter, or the precision calibrated microphone that plugs right into an i device. And obviously you would have to determine, you know, do you, I don't think, you know, the mayor wants to use his phone, right? So, um, yeah, do, do you have to, you know, get, get a device that's dedicated or devices that are dedicated for this, put the apps on there and, and, uh, you know, that doesn't take long at all to do that. So.
Just for, just for the, just so, just for information purposes, the, the, the meter, you know, the more expensive equipment, like what's the cost of that? Just out of curiosity.
I, I was looking into this a little bit over the last couple of days, and we're talking about probably in the order of four or five thousand.
Gotcha. Okay. Well.
That isn't the one I wanted.
We didn't, we didn't want that one, did we? Were we looking for that one? No.
Unfortunately, as I said, it's a big step up. Once you start adding that, that functionality into this.
Gotcha. Okay. But, but the other, the other, uh, method you mentioned is
Like under the, yeah.
Yeah, under that. Okay.
Especially for the day-to-day type of enforcement that we're talking about here.
Right. That makes sense.
I, I would say that some towns share, uh, a device, but one of my towns shared a device with another town and they came back and
Broken.
Not good shape.
That does seem to be the
Measure the other town.
That does seem to be a problem sometimes, sharing equipment. Yes.
It, it is dangerous for sure.
It sounds like if there was an issue, our local officer with the lesser device could determine if there's a possible problem. And as you said before, if it becomes sort of a legal battle or something more technical, we should bring in an expert anyways to have your testimony.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that's a safe way of doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this way, our officer could kind of make a general judgment, whether it's warranted or not.
Right.
I have a question that if we, Steve, if we were to, or maybe Jeff, if we were to use the app, would the police be able to issue a citation based off of an app that was not a hundred percent accurate?
I mean, reality is, not that you want to go to law school tonight, but no matter what device you use, the data is hearsay, you know, um, get around it when you have an expert. Experts are allowed to rely on hearsay. But if the app is reliable, I mean, you know, we'd have to know how long the app has been around, uh, you know, who the developer of the app is, how reliable it is, you know, whether the host for the app has some expertise. There's, there's a whole bunch of questions that you would use kind of court acts as a gatekeeper to determine the reliability of scientific or technical evidence. There's a, there's a United States Supreme Court case called Dogger versus Dow Chemical that goes back about twenty-five years that sets out a whole criteria. Um, and you would apply that to this evidence to determine whether it's reliable or not. So whether it's an app on a phone or, you know, the five thousand dollar meter, you have to establish the same thing. You know, is it calibrated? Is the microphone calibrated? You're gonna have to need a burden of proof, but you know, the reality is, you don't really go down that road that often, because the other side has to get their, you know, the property owner or the tenant, they have to go get their own testing done.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's one of those things that Steve and Tessa probably agree, if the testing is done correctly, properly, proper equipment, the results shouldn't vary materially.
That, that is, that is correct, Jeff. And, you know, this, this is a calibrator. Okay. This fits on, on a mic, the, the, the calibratable mic that plugs right into your phone. So essentially within thirty seconds, an officer, once trained, can calibrate with the app, the level that's being recorded through that external mic plugged into his phone. You cannot use the, I mean, you can, you can always use your phone's internal mics, but that would not be calibrated in any way. So by, by adjusting it with the calibrator and using the external mic and the app's calibration function, you have a very, very accurate type of measurement that you're, you're recording.
Okay. Well, so that, right. Yeah, that makes, that makes sense, right? So we want to draft something and also maybe have Steve, uh, you know, point us in the direction for the equipment and kind of, and it shouldn't take long, Steve, you said, for the equipment to get that mic is not that big a deal?
No, I, I would say, let, let's say two weeks.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what they're, they're back, you know, back logged, but let's say two weeks for, for the mic and the calibrator. And then you can
Do some training.
Well, yeah. And then, then you would have to acquire an i device, right? Whether it's an iPad or an, or an iPhone. And, and the, the app is downloadable and, and very, fairly inexpensive for sure.
Yep.
Do the officers have that?
Well, that's a question for Lieutenant Solik. I'm wondering how many officers currently, I don't know if you're there, Sean, how many officers currently are trained for the existing sound device? Because we would, assuming we would want everybody who's currently trained to undergo the training for the new software as well.
Uh, Ryan, could you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I had to pop off you. Um, I, right now, I believe we probably only have two people trained, uh, cause it was kind of a specialized piece of equipment. Um, so they, they went through it. If we had a need for it, we would get that testing done with them. If we're talking about a simple calibration tool and microphone, uh, with an iPhone, we could probably get more people trained and have a little more flexibility with who can operate that.
Great. Okay. So we could work on that. So
Yeah.
So I think what I'm hearing is the, it sounds like you are comfortable with the language that SH Acoustics is recommending.
Yes.
Ordinance itself.
I think so.
We still need some advice as far as what equipment we'll use and the training that we'll provide for our officers.
Yes.
So, uh, Steve, do you think you could provide that for us within, our, our next meeting is the first week of June? Do you think we'd have that? We couldn't, the ordinance committee could meet again?
Yeah.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
Two weeks and then we can go from there?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
One quick question. Has any other town done this yet? Well, quickly, any small town area?
We, we don't know any who have fully adopted it, but we are certainly talking with a number of towns about this, only for the very reason that we're talking with you is they, they've had problems with other operations, not not impacting the town, but but not being able to show that they're out of compliance because of the limitations of the ordinance. And I'm also talking with my colleagues up at Quiet Communities, a nationwide organization that that really deals with the health and wellness impact of of folks. And they may have specific towns that already have adopted it. But they they would love to to see you adopt it, I'm sure. If you're if you're interested, it depends on how much you're interested in kind of promoting the fact that you're really, you really care about the health and wellness of your residents in this way to to take that extra step. I'm sure they they would love to know that story.
Okay, that sounds good.
Let's move forward.
All right. So, yeah, well, what you said, we'll put it on and, you know. Language, you know, we'll look at the language and the and the equipment. 6:30, borrowing equipment, we don't want to try that. I remember some police department, LAPD borrowed our undercover Ferrari back in the day and they wrecked it. So I mean, it's not never good to, and then we didn't have it anymore, our our particular agency, but whatever. So it's probably good not to borrow equipment.
Don't lend our Ferrari.
No, we're not letting the other cover Ferrari from Berlin PD out to anybody. No. They didn't even know they had one, did you, Sean?
That's all secret.
Yeah. All right. That's top secret stuff. So anyway, okay, good. So with that in mind, we'll go ahead and motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Poked right, so move. Thank you.
Steve and Tess, thank you.
Thank you, Tessa and Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, we're going to stop recording the regular town council meeting.
Yeah, give us a couple of minutes to get settled and.